Good evening. If we can go ahead and be seated and get ready to start our meeting. If you all could hopefully find a seat, if we need some more seats, I'm sure we can provide some. But if you can all have your seats, we can get started. Welcome to the Monday, March 2nd meeting of the work session of the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Economic Development Authority. We have a full house, both with boards and commissions and with the community. We're delighted you're all here with us tonight. We're here primarily to hear about Mason Row. And I think the order of what we're going to do things tonight is to hear from the developer, the applicant, and then we'll go ahead and have a staff report, and then we'll go around the room with questions, comments, et cetera. And there'll be no comments from the public. You're here to listen. Unfortunately, at work session, you're not able to speak, but there'll be plenty of public hearings on this matter as well, and so you'll have your opportunity then. But why don't we go ahead and get started? And maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Batten, Peter Batten, thank you, or Mr. Lasso. Thank you both for coming out this evening.
Mr. Lasso, if you want to hold it, you can pull it out of the sand, whichever's easier for you.
Is it working now?
Yep.
Actually, it's a good thing that everybody is so interested in the project. But to reintroduce everybody, I'm Dave Lasso. I'm the attorney representing Spectrum LLC. They are the contract owners of what is now a 4.3 acre site. You'll learn later in more detail that one of the changes from the last time we met before the agencies is the addition of 916 West Broad. That was suggested to the developer early in the process, but it took some time to be able to pull that off. But now 916 is a part of the site, and the plan has been changed to incorporate that development. This is Peter Batten to my left, a principal. Dick Buskel with Spectrum is here. Jeff Whitman is here. He is the architect. And Karen White is here from Phillips Engineers to help us go through the proposals. There's been some dramatic changes really from the last submission that you saw. Most importantly, there is now the inclusion of a movie theater complex. When the council had first reading on this development, really in the fall, one of the charges to the team was to get a second anchor. That's been done. There are actually still two theaters quite interested, and so they're in the final stages, the developers are, of selecting which of the two will be the final movie theater. So that's an enormous change to the development, and we hope you are as excited about it really as we are. That inclusion caused the development to change as well with how parking was handled. This now requires that the movie theater, you know, a large portion of it, really be underground. So there's an entrance to the movie theater and an eating establishment associated with the movie theater on the ground level, but the actual screens are below level. And you will see how that affected the parking, really in a beneficial way, we think. It made a dramatic change. It allowed also for some of the parking to be in a above-grade structure rather than underground, and that is an additional change. One of the major concerns before we took a break over the holidays was the access point, vehicular access point on Park Avenue. There was a condominium building there at one point. It evolved, and then there was a garage within it, but it still had an access point on Park Avenue. There is now no access point on Park Avenue vehicular, and at this point, or for pedestrians. So that's changed dramatically. The charge also was to continue meeting, continue working with the community, addressing what were then 30 comments from the staff about the project. That's been an ongoing effort. Now, the one other aspect I want to just preview for you is that there is now an option being presented to you by the developer for a public library. In every development that I've been involved with in the city for mixed-use projects, there's been a discussion about, well, is there any municipal use that could be put in that development? Let's think about it. Let's see how that might work. So that discussion has occurred many times. It occurred with even the city center project, which of course didn't, never went forward. But there was discussion even then, at least informally, about what you might do by way of having municipal use there. In this case, the discussion occurred early on, but it took on a new meaning when we got these major revisions underway, and there was renewed interest in, you know, there's a lot of, I'll just explain it this way, an awful lot of attention to the library. Where are they going to go? How are they going to deal with the issues involved with the small site that they're on? And for me at least, on a personal level, it was the same discussion that I went through in the '80s when we did the last revision. We ended up with a plan that we've lived with all these years that resulted in a library that is incredibly popular but very inadequate. Parking is not on the site like every site is required to have. It's on the street. And really, the ability to expand has been constrained. There are operational issues that go on year after year. And so I spoke with Peter and Dick and said, well, that's a use that if there's any interest, we really ought to take a look at it. That's conceivable. And they did. And the council, a couple efforts were made. Council was informed informally. Some discussions began. But more importantly, some real hard work was done by our architects and our engineers about, gee, just where would this library go? And we're going to show you that tonight. So the presentation tonight will go through the project without the library, without the library. And then we'll pause, and we'll then begin a discussion about what happens if a library is included. And what the point I'd like to make before I turn this over to Peter is that the issues really need to be split up in terms of how you might acquire a new site and build a new library, which wouldn't necessarily have to be in our building. With the issue of land use for this building, meaning is this, as a land use matter, a place where a library is an acceptable municipal use? Your charter requires that any land, any space that is devoted for a public use, needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and a determination made that the general location, character, and extent, general location, character, and extent are included in your comprehensive plan. Right now, there's no mention in the comprehensive plan about a library being anyplace other than where it is right now. So fundamentally, that's a decision that would need to be made. You'd need to amend your comprehensive plan. It's done by resolution. The actual mechanics of it are very simple. But the policy issue is one that's certainly larger. Then there's the other related issue, which is okay. If it's okay in a comprehensive plan, how do we deal with it for this development? What we need, to be frank, is an inclusion in the approval for the special exception, which would be dealt with in the voluntary concessions. A paragraph would be added that would say that there is an option for a public library as shown in the attached exhibit, which we'll show to you tonight what that exhibit is. It would be done in more detail in the ensuing week, or however long it takes, so that you, the Planning Commission, the boards and commissions, the public, the council, can look at it and then decide, we want to have an option in the Mason Row development for a public library. Doesn't say you're going to put it there. It just means that it's an option. And then later, if you decide that you do want to have it there, it will have been approved for the zoning purposes in this development, which is important to the investors, to the developers, because they don't want to spend a lot of time on it if it's not even going to be allowed in the special exception. So it proceeds in that manner. You exercise the option, and then the next steps go forward, which is deciding how it's to be paid. What are the financial implications? Do you keep the old site? Do you sell the old site? What's the family, you know, that site, of course, was given with the restrictive covenant. I dealt with that years ago, and I spoke to the family about their feelings of what if we moved the library? They were open to it then. That was 25 years ago. I don't know what they might say today, but that's really, that's your call. That's the decision you have to make. Peter, jump in.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Thanks for having us out this evening. It's good to be back here talking about Mason Row. We're going to concentrate tonight on the major changes to the project. And Karen, I guess you'll help me, and we'll just dive right in.
Would you like the lights off, Mr. Batten?
Maybe it'd be helpful, yeah.
The top white one?
There you go.
Yep.
What you're looking here in this chart is the prior submission, which we made in August of last year. That is the massing totals for the project under that submission. So residential, that's the gross square feet of the building. Retail, gross square footage. Hotel, there was no office, of course, no library, and no theater. The project total, 519,000 gross square feet for all of the building space in the project for that submission. The market square itself is shown. Those were the dimensions of the market square under the prior submission, about 5,800 gross square feet. Total parking in the prior submission, 684 spaces, and we were asking for a parking reduction of 20% across the board. What you're looking at to the right is the submission, we call it the current submission, which we provided to staff at the end of January of this year. And just kind of going through this massing, residential is the top line. It has gone down to 383,000 square feet from the prior submission. Retail has gone up to 53,000 gross square feet. The hotel's gone down slightly. We've added 6,000 square feet of office space above the retail on the east side of the project on, facing West Broad Street. And then we've added a theater, and the theater space underground and on the surface is totaling 52,000 gross square feet. So the project total for the current submission, under the current submission, is grown to 565,000 gross square feet. The market square has also grown. The market square has just about doubled in size, and we've gone from the 5,800 square feet in the prior submission to the design today, which has the market square at a little over 11,000 gross square feet. Total parking spaces for the current submission is 947 spaces, and we're going to go through the project drawings and show you where and how the parking works. The 947 spaces are inclusive of above-ground structured parking, surface parking, and underground structured parking. We're also asking for a parking reduction in the current submission of 20%. This is a slide just to indicate the fiscal impact of this project. We've shown you this before in the, when we presented for the previous submission. The light blue line represents the fiscal impact to the city under the massing and uses of the prior submission. The taller green is representative of the fiscal impact under the current submission with the uses that we've described. The other bars of this graph are showing estimated and actual net fiscal impact to the city of the other mixed-use projects in the city. This is the site plan, the engineered site plan, and what I'm going to do, each of these red boxes denotes changes to the project. And so we're going to go from this slide to the next slide and start isolating each of these change areas. The first change I want to talk about is we have added 916 West Broad Street, and that is a property whose dimensions are right in here. It's about 18,000 square feet of property, and that takes us from the corner at West Street all the way to the church property, St. James Church property. Oh, excuse me. Another change to the project is we are proposing and adding to the design of the project a signal, just so we can signalize the eastern access point, full access point, to the project. And we're adding also a crosswalk there at that signal intersection. Some other changes. We have realigned the intersection, and we are committed to putting a traffic light at the intersection of Northwest Street and Park Avenue. In the previous submission, we were proposing a four-way stop at that intersection. We've also added a crosswalk to this intersection here, and we brought, with the help of the Park Authority, the trail crossing, or the trail down, so we can have a trail crossing at this intersection in front of the drive bar for traffic that's waiting to get through that intersection. So now we have four crosswalks at this intersection. The intersection has been realigned to have the intersection have four streets almost directly aligned. The other change to the project is an addition of a crosswalk at Grove Avenue, Northwest Street, to provide access to the project for pedestrians coming from the Grove Avenue As that box down there is suggesting, we still are in discussions and investigating what we can do there as the trail crosses Grove Avenue. We're exploring the possibilities of maybe a raised crosswalk, putting a vertical sign that would be on the street, as you may see when you go in the area. And you're near large parks where there are crossings across the road. You'll see some of those street pedestrian signs in the middle of the crosswalk to warn cars that there is a parked pedestrian crosswalk. And then here, the last change on this slide, is we have designed in a loading area here, a street loading area on West Street to service the theater and the hotel. Okay, next slide. This slide is showing Park Avenue as it approaches the intersection Northwest Street and Park Avenue. You'll notice here that originally, in the previous submission, there was a garage access point to the residential parking here on Park Avenue, and that has been removed. And we've, they're talking about the realignment and the additional crosswalks that we've put. So we have four crosswalks now on each corner of the park and Northwest intersection. Some more changes. We have removed the surface-level parking that was there along West Street inside the project, and we have added a curb cut and a garage area for trash to service the trash needs for the hotel and the theater. This trash garage will also provide trash service to the retail in this portion of the project. That trash garage will have a door that is closed and only opened when trash is being removed from that location. This location here is directly across the street from the Wells Fargo parking lot access. And this is talking about the change for the market square. The market square is almost double in size from the previous submission. This slide is just showing the change and the addition of the theater. The theater will have a surface area with a restaurant lounge, ticket area, and then escalators taking moviegoers down below to where the theaters are. Again, this is talking about the market square. The dimensions have expanded about 192%, so almost double in size versus the previous This is depicting the above-ground structured parking, going from the surface below this. This is just the mezzanine level, and cars are going up the ramps in a circular fashion into a above-ground structured parking. That's a new addition since the prior submission. This is just showing you where we are adding office above the first floor retail here on West Broad Street, about 5,500 to 5,600 square feet of office. And this slide is just showing the continuation of the above-ground parking garage addition there on the Park Avenue side. Again, it's continuing up, third, fourth floor continuing, and fifth floor is the last floor of the parking garage. This is showing the sixth floor, which has the apartments and the hotel in goal along West Street. Underground, there have been changes. The area, it's kind of hard to see, but there is an outline of the theater area, which is about 30 feet underground and will have eight screens. And it will be positioned with access to the surface on that side of the project underground. In the middle here, what we're trying to show you is Mason Lane. Originally, we had the P1 parking garage going all the way through the project. Now Mason Lane will sit on the ground directly, which gives us a lot of options for landscaping. It permits us to put in, which you'll see later in the drawings, trees that can grow to very large heights, sizable trees, which will give a nice effect to the interior of the project. This is the P2 level down below, further below. The P2 parking area has stayed the same. This is just showing you the first floor of the underground where the theaters are, where people will be accessing each theater. There will be a kitchen down below, providing food service to the patrons inside the theaters, and there will be a mezzanine level for the theater cameras and so forth in this section. And that is an addition change to the project. I'm going to ask our architect, Jeff Whitman, to come up and talk a little bit about the renderings we want to show you and the architectural style and the materials that we are contemplating using for the project.
Thank you. As Peter alluded to, we went through the plan. This is a view at the intersection of Mason Lane, West Avenue, and Park Avenues here. As Peter alluded to a moment ago, that we've actually realigned Mason Lane, so it's more in line, it's actually directly in line with the intersection of where West Street runs north. So we've got a much better intersection at this location. We have our retail on the eastern side of Mason Lane. We have retail, and we're including some sort of theater motif along this side. A lot of, and then we have our hotel wrapped in the corner here. This represents our apartment level. The lower levels would actually include a lot of cast stone, natural stone materials at this band level, along with the storefronts within there. The upper levels for the apartments would all be brick, a Trespa panel, which is a man-made product, but it looks like it can get a lot of different materials to it. You can also, you can get it in a wood sort of material as well. This is representative of a cast stone product on this side. We're kind of thinking maybe we're of a split face type, a stone, natural stone over here on this side. The hotel itself would be a lot of the same brick. We'd be using multiple brick colors on the project, and also be integrating some of the Trespa panels, maybe some metal panels in there. We just haven't worked that through the details with the hotel vendor. As you can see, this is the Mason Lane there with my bridge across there that exits out to West Broad Street. This is a view looking down from the rooftop of this wing of the apartments. This is market square here, Mason Lane, Northwest Avenue. This is our hotel piece, terminates here. The rest of the residential or multifamily component extends along this side, along West Broad Street. As Peter alluded to as well, is that the market square is almost doubled in size now to a much more manageable size. We can integrate a lot more festivals and a lot of more activity with a lot more space. This represents a sort of general location for the entry to the theater below. The final location kind of depends upon who the actual theater vendor would be. So, but we're probably inclined that it's kind of going to be over in this area here. The rest of this, again, the same materials, the brick, Trespa panels, same panels also on the hotel that we'd mentioned, along with the same sort of multiple brick colors. And also, we can see here the drive-up for the hotel. You get a real sense, too, here, of the brick area of the road. There's no curb here, so this area can be expanded during festival events to almost double the size of this. Next slide? Oh, actually, back one more, sorry. Also, you can see that the trees can get much more fuller in depth as well with this image as well. This represents a view off of West Broad Street looking into the project. This is the opening underneath tying into Mason Lane. Retail lining the up and down West Broad Street, multifamily, or, excuse me, apartments above. A lot of the Trespa panels, multiple colors with that, multiple colors of brick. We use a stone veneer at the bottom. You can see a lot of the brick pavers that are occurring here, fully grown trees, a lot of activity along the street here. And again, you get a sense of what's going on in the market square as well. This is a view, again, the same type of thing, where you can get a sense of the depth of the expanded market square. Excuse me. In the extended brick area, you can also tell there's no curb line there. There'll actually be some bollards that would actually demarcate the pedestrian level from the traffic. As you can see, the hotel is beyond here, theater component here, along with a lot of the stone veneer materials, brick materials, as I had mentioned as well. This area could be, and again, the intention of the market square has grown such that outdoor winter activities with ice skating is still very, very viable option at this point in time, along with the festivals during the summer months. Next slide. This represents a view of, this is along Park Avenue here. This is the termination of the project at Mason Lane here. This represents our parking garage structure with a lot of trees. We have some brick veneer. The screening itself is, we're working through that process right now, but we really have quite a bit of options, at least with being able to screen the structured parking above. Apartments beyond that, which would all be the same brick materials, Trespa panels beyond the rest of the project. Okay, and it's, before we get into the questions and answers, we want to go through the library option.
Go ahead.
This is just a comparison to the, this is, these are the numbers you saw with these two pages, or these two or these two columns. This represents with the library. The residential remains the same. The retail has gone down a couple thousand square feet. We've kept the same hotel size, the office size is the same. We'd be including 25,000 square feet of library to this space and the 52,000 square feet for the library. And it ends up with a net difference of about 19,000 square feet additional square feet, gross square feet. Market Square would remain the same. Parking provided, we would have an increase as a result of the theater or the, excuse me, the library space, the 981 spaces, and still be requesting the 20 percent parking reduction. The fiscal impact would be the same. We can, okay. As you can see here, this is the area of the library. Everything else is the same that we had, that we just spoke of. The library would be running along Park Avenue there underneath the parking garage. And that level is about 15,000, 16,000 square feet, 16,000 square feet. The next level up, which would be the mezzanine level, would house the 9,000 or so, the difference between the two, the 25,000 for the remainder of the library at this level. And that would just be integrated to the rest of the parking garage that is currently there. The fifth floor, as a result of the additional parking, the fifth floor would be required to continue up for parking garage, and then also the sixth floor would have a parking garage as well. So this will be a view. This is kind of an idea how this would begin to sort of wrap the corner. Again, we're using a lot of the same materials that we use on the rest of the project. We're integrating the idea of mixing in with a lot of the brick because this is such a solid corner with some vertical circulation in here. We want to try to mix it up a little bit with the trespo panels, which we'll get into in just a moment. Yep. And this is the view looking down Park Avenue again with the structured parking above. There's sort of a lot of glass along here for the library, a lot of the reading areas there. We're also envisioning an outdoor café eating area facing east towards the church property. Also, the, again, we're sort of the integration of the sort of trespo panels mixed in with the sort of screened and bricked parking garage above. This is a view also from the corner looking down. You get a sense of the grade change that occurs. There'd be access points all along at the corner. Access directly in the library would be at the corner of Mason Lane and West Streets. Due to the grade change, we actually don't even need to put a ramp there. We can actually just tie in the sidewalk along the side of the library to tie into the rest of the sidewalks, so pedestrian, would be pedestrian-friendly. Again, this is the second level up here, whether that be stacks or whatever it may be on the upper level or the mezzanine level for the library. A lot of the trespo panels, a lot of glass, at least on the reading sides of the project. Yeah, the main entrance would be right in here. Three entries, three stairs or six, actually, three set of double doors currently. Okay? That's it.
Thank you very much. We're now going to have a staff report, and then we'll turn it over to the various members around the board for questions and comments. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mary.
Why don't we turn the lights up, too, if we can?
Yeah, it'd be good to have the lights on. Gary Fuller is our senior planner, and he is assigned to this project, so he will walk through, I think, just a summary of some of our initial review of the project, some of our comments on it. And Rick Goff also, we've already passed out our city fiscal impact analysis, and we'd like to spend just a little bit of time on that.
Thank you.
With the February 2015 submission last month, the land use and zoning actions that are required on this application remain unchanged. Basically, you have the comprehensive plan amendment for business in a low-density residential proposed to change to mixed use. Secondly, you have a rezoning of the official zoning map. That would be from the existing B3 and R1B properties all to B1. Of note, the property that was added to this project at 916 already existed with the B1 zoning, so it wouldn't be required to be part of that ordinance and that rezoning because it already has the existing zoning that's needed. Thirdly, there would be a special exception for residential development to be allowed in a mixed-use project on a commercial property, basically. And then, fourth, a special exception for a 30-foot increase in building height bonus from 85 feet maximum on the buildings. Just to highlight some of the general changes that staff thought were important to point out, and the developers touched on many of these. There's really three areas I want to touch on. Site changes, then there was residential and commercial changes, as well as that affected the ratio, and then there was some programmatic changes as well. As I mentioned, the leftover commercial parcel that was on West Broad at 916 is approximately 18,000 square feet, and that's been added to the project with the existing B1 zoning. Also, the three residential parcels that are on Park Avenue are part of the rezoning application. They've continued to remain with the project. At the last application, there was some discussion of whether they would be part of it. They continue to remain. So the overall site has actually increased from 3.91 acres to 4.3. That was in regard to the site changes. For the residential and commercial changes, the requested movie theater's been added, and that's almost 52,000 square feet, and that was added to the application. And the program adjustments were made throughout this that the developer was just alluding to. And there's also a small office component, about 6,000 square feet, that was added as a second new commercial use to this project. So, on the residential side, the previous proposed 67 multifamily condos, they were facing on Park Avenue. They have been removed and the units replaced by multifamily rental units, so it's completely, all the multifamilies rental now. And the site and building location of the previous condominiums is now proposed for a six-level garage, which is five levels with additional mezzanine level. Then overall, the commercial square feet of the project has increased by over 52,000 square feet, which is a 40 percent increase in the commercial. So there's been a significant change in the latest application with the addition of the commercial space mainly due to the theater. This represents, you know, the commercial component of the hotel, the retail, the theater, and the office now. And the resulting ratio has increased from 25 percent commercial and 75 percent residential now to 32 percent and 68 percent. And the floor area ratio really is, remains the same relatively speaking at 3.0. It was previously 3.04, so that's unchanged. There was an increase in 20 multifamily units. They're all rental, so we have an increase from 320 to 340 of the rental apartment-only units. The overall average unit size remains relatively unchanged as well for the rental component, not including the previous larger condominium units, but looking at the previous rental units and the last proposal and the current rental units, the average unit size is approximately the same. The programmatic changes, as generally mentioned, most notably include the addition of the movie theaters mentioned, and that's both underground and partially above ground. Then there was an increase in the overall commercial component that we mentioned, and with almost 4,000 more of retail being added from the last submission, and the 6,000 square feet of the new commercial office users, as well as the significant 52,000 square feet of the theater. The market square, as the developer has mentioned, has almost doubled in size. And the other development changes included a six-story parking garage, including the mezzanine on Park Avenue with a primary entrance that's proposed on West Broad now. Previously, the residential parking garage was served by Park Avenue as the main entrance. There's been an increase in the residential density with the condominium component being removed and replaced with additional parking units. The parking changes proposed have increased from 909 parking spaces to 947, and they're asking for 18.5 percent reduction. Previously, they were at 20 percent, according to the plans that we've looked at. Just to switch over and highlight some of the preliminary issues or concerns that we would like to, you know, put on the table for discussion starting tonight and throughout the process, these might include really five categories. One is the architecture and design. The parking garage, it's building, the height, the setbacks, the visual impacts on Park Avenue are significant concern in terms of the residential neighborhood that's located there existing. The building height and density, you know, we continue to look at that. Park Avenue impacts and the residential character, once again, this is a primary concern for us. Building massing and elevations, we'll continue to look at those. And then the connections to the W O N D trail are an important element that we want to make sure gets integrated effectively. On the program basis, we have the movie theater that's requiring a city subsidy, and there's been some initial discussions on how that might work. Then you have a public library concept that's been introduced as a parallel option. It's not part of this current application at this time. And then you have the residential density and school impacts that have been discussed throughout the process. And then you have some secondary concern areas about the retail merchandising plan, the interior space size of the market square, which has been increased, and all rental versus condominium units might be an issue to look at as well on a fiscal impact standpoint. Thirdly, you have traffic and transportation. You have the Grove West and Park Avenue intersections. The developer has indicated some new pedestrian crossings and has committed to two traffic lights, one at Northwest and Park and the other on West Broad Street. You have the W O N D alignment. That's an important traffic pedestrian area that we want to look at, as well as, they mentioned, a possible raised crossing on Grove Avenue, which is something we've been looking at staff faces. And then the Park Avenue and Northwest Street intersection itself, and looking at that, and general traffic impacts on the surrounding streets, and the requested parking reduction and the justification for that, and then basically the provision of adequate onsite parking is very important. Then the voluntary concessions, the community benefits and terms and conditions that are associated with that. The affordable housing, we need a component that meets the local needs and the AMI objectives of the city. There's been a discussion of a contribution to the library, a contribution to our parks. There's been a programmed contribution to the schools. There's other community impact or benefits that have been requested and are being looked at. And then there's the city's final objectives and guidance and comments on these voluntary concessions and transmitting those to the applicant. There's been, you know, general discussion to date. And lastly is the schedule. From administrative action, it's sort of our next step, and staff has drafted a schedule that refers this to boards and commissions in March with a second reading in June, July, possible. Review of the new application is proposed to be restarted at the beginning of the special exception process that we just went through. We're really restarting it with the schedule that we proposed. And so the possible referral boards and commissions could be, March 23rd is the staff's preferred date, or you could do it sooner on March 9th, but we wouldn't be able to have staff comments really available to you because we just got the project early February, and we're still wrapping up a review of that. The second reading, we recommend could be June 22nd with July 13th as a possible continued second reading date as a backup, and then a determination as to whether the first reading would be necessary again. Technically, you don't need to do that. As I mentioned, the 916 property was added, but it already has the B1 zoning that's required. So the ordinance that was given first reading back in September could be just a second reading at this point, since that is unchanged. Or we could easily add that to the referral of board and commissions on the same night, on the same agenda. It really is not additional work for city staff. And so anyway, I would ask for guidance on these next steps tonight as part of your discussion. Thank you.
And I think the scheduling would be the last thing to talk about, and that I think will really be flow out of the comments and what we get out of tonight's meeting from the planning commission, EDA, and the council comments. Lastly, from a staff report, Rick Goff has circulated the run that we have done through our cost-revenue-income model, the CREM, and will just summarize its findings. Rick?
Thank you. We've found that Mason Row is at least as complex as city center in terms of a fiscal impact analysis because it has so many component parts. Before I begin a summary, there are several caveats I need to mention. The movie theater value and revenue assumptions are midpoints in ranges that reflect several different potential theater operators. So until a final operator is identified and a pro forma can be reviewed to validate revenue and other projections, we've done the best we can with that component of the project. We have not included a library in the analysis. As we understand it, if it is included, it will displace about 5,300 square feet of retail. Now, starting with the fiscal impact of existing land uses on the 4.3 acres targeted for redevelopment, there is currently net revenue totaling about $234,000 per year based on gross revenue of about $398,000 per year. And that's from all tax revenue sources. These numbers are used in our net-net fiscal impact analysis. I should note that the 7-Eleven store accounts for about 20 percent of the existing gross revenue. The developers have stated that they intend to lease space to 7-Eleven and Mason Row. Moving to a fiscal impact analysis of uses proposed in Mason Row, we estimate a range of gross revenue between $4,253,000 and $4,448,000 per year. Again, that's gross revenue. About two-thirds of gross annual expenses accounted for in the fiscal impact model are public school operating costs. So it's very important to note that projections for new pupils living in Mason Row are critical to the analysis. At one end of the range of estimates for new pupils, we've used a ratio of 0.33 for each of the 340 apartments. This represents the ratio of pupils living in mid-rise apartments across the city and gives us an estimate of 112 pupils in Mason Row. Now, understand that this ratio was applied like a blunt instrument. It doesn't differentiate the current pupil population in those mid-rise apartments by residential unit bedroom count, and it doesn't apply those ratios to proposed departments in Mason Row with the same bedroom count categories. It produces projected expenses at the high end of the range and thus a net fiscal impact of $1,872,000 per year. At the other end of the range, we looked at pupil ratios in mixed-use development projects in the city that have apartments, Pearson Square, the Reed Building, and now North Gate. At the EDC's request, we drilled down to determine the ratios of pupils by bedroom count in those buildings for the same apartment types that are proposed in Mason Row: studios, one-bedrooms, one-bedrooms with dens, and two-bedrooms. There are no two-bedrooms with dens or three-bedroom apartments proposed in Mason Row. The result of this analysis is lower overall annual expenses for the city due to fewer estimated pupils, a total of 55 using that methodology. The projected net fiscal impact at this end of the range is $2,576,000 per year. If we compare Mason Row by net fiscal impact and then by net-net fiscal impact projections with previously approved special exception projects, it would fall at or near the very top of that list. On a per-acre basis, Mason Row's On a per-acre basis, Mason Row is expected to yield about $433,000 to $595,000 per acre per year net annual revenue, and about $379,000 to $541,000 per acre net-net annual revenue. That concludes the fiscal impact analysis.
Thank you very much. Before we get started around the table, why don't we have the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Baruch. I understand you all met on this project a few days ago, I guess last week. Would you like to give a report?
Yeah, happy to. So we met last Thursday on this project. We met for over an hour, I believe it was about an hour and a half or so, looking at the economic impacts of the project and also what the program looks like now and the comparison. So much of what you heard today, but it was presented by staff rather than the developer. There was three areas where I think we had some consensus on. I'm going to try to summarize those now in no particular order. One, which was alluded to this evening, is that the applicant has added a theater into the program. There'd been some informal discussions about any type of subsidy or tax that would go along with it. It's not part of the application at the current time, so we need to get a better understanding if there's going to be an ask of the city or not before this project moves forward, if at all. And then two, there was some discussion about the library option and timing. I think that there wasn't necessarily consensus on whether more information was needed or not, but there was consensus not to bifurcate them, that the public needed to get a better sense of what this project was before it gets completed and goes to final approvals. And then finally, there was some discussion about timing, first reading or second reading, and how that would play out. I think the general consensus was that there needs to be a full public discussion about that, that, you know, whether we call it a first reading or not is just dependent on how people view it. But I think there was general consensus that as long as we met an end date of completing when the approval projects go through, which it sounded like we could do even if we're talking about a new first reading, that could still be accomplished by the summer timeframe. So I think there was a sense that that may be the best approach because that's generally how we're used to talking about these things. So I think that's a quick summary of capturing what the EDC talked about last week.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go around the room, sort of going group by group? Maybe we could start with the planning commission, and you all could give us your comments, your thoughts, and then we'll go to the EDA, and then finally we'll go around to council. If that's all right. Ms. Rogers?
I'm just looking for general comments about the presentation by the developer.
Well, on the presentation or your thoughts in general about the project, questions you might have, open issues for staff to consider, feedback.
I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the fiscal impact or about everything.
Well, I mean, if you have a comment about the fiscal impact or question, feel free to make.
No, I do not. Okay. But I do have a comment about the project, or a couple of comments about the project. To start with, I'm completely underwhelmed by the current architectural design of the project. In my opinion, it does not work in conjunction with the existing buildings and with the residential neighborhood. The West Street elevation showing that one-half of the facade facing that street, it's either blank walls with faux stone or fake wood, or a trash bag, I mean, a trash bay. And, yes?
Karen, would you mind putting up some of the slides so we can see what Ms. Rogers is talking about?
This is the West Street elevation.
[inaudible]
Yeah.
West Street view.
Kind of. No, it's...
That's the other side.
A little bit to the right.
Cross the bank. Grove.
I don't think we had one that was a really good slide.
Okay, well, I can pull it out.
We also had the Park Avenue side, which was kind of...
If you don't have one, so be it. But I think it's helpful if you could, Ms. Dean, yeah, or White, when there is discussion about a particular elevation, or if you can try to pull that up, I think it'd be helpful for the public especially.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm looking, I was looking at page A 2.2 on the special application application. Oopsie. And my comment is that half of that elevation is blank. I mean, it's either this fake wood or fake stone and the trash bay. And, you know, it just doesn't work for me. The rendering of the hotel looks like it has individual, and that's not on this side, it's on another drawing, but the hotel looks like it has unattractive individual air conditioning units on each, in each unit. And, yeah. And the parking garage, to me, is just really ugly. I have reviewed some of the architect's other work, and they have some nice stuff up there. And I think it would work better in context with what we expect in Falls Church. I'm also concerned about the height of the parking garage. It needs to step down on Park as required by our code to 35 feet, since it faces a low-density R1B area. I just think we really need to do something with that. And I don't believe that the proposed changes to traffic pattern at West and Broad is an improvement to traffic flow, since they benefit only the proposed development. And they play havoc with the established buildings and offices there, or not offices, but the established businesses and residential, and the established traffic patterns that are working for us now. And the proposal now has trash trucks backing out onto West Street where it's narrowed down to one lane. And then up a little further, they have a loading dock. I just don't see how that's going to work. It seems that it's certain to negatively affect any traffic going east on West Street. And lastly, these are my four big objections to the project. I find it rather disingenuous that the voluntary concession statement for the comp plan and decide guidelines implies that the project somehow will be contributing to changes made to the W O N D trail or the West End Park. In my opinion, the project cannot take credit for either one of those as community benefits. I mean, those are things that are ongoing. We're working on the park now. Even if they gave us $150,000 towards it, it's not going to, I mean, the park will be done by the time we get that. And I don't see any indication that they have a plan working in tandem with the Park Service to do something to the, or the Regional Park Authority to do something to that trail. So those are my four major objections.
Thank you. How about other of your colleagues?
Yes, I'll start down at this end.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. I don't think I'll get this, but I am curious, obviously, about the details on the tax-related subsidy on theater. I think that's a critical component. And if the library is an option people want to consider, the costs and stuff like that, that's a big question mark to me. I do wonder about the parking deck. This is the view. I do think how that's going to look in the end is pretty important. But I do think that this is much better, much improved. Getting rid of the drive onto Park is great. I think it's less fortress-looking from the Grove side of things. I really like the public space on the interior. You know, I don't know if any of our mixed-use projects, big projects, have had that kind of public center to it. You know, a lot of the projects have interiors that are only for the residents, and so we don't really ever get to enjoy them. So I think that's cool. Yeah, so I mean, I think it's much improved. I think there's probably some more stuff to go, but I'm pretty happy with it.
Okay. First off, I guess I would say I agree with the memo we had from staff that I really don't think the library belongs in this project. I'd rather see where it is. I'd also like, since we definitely have the time in the calendar, to go ahead and do first reading again. I think that the citizens would be more open to us doing first reading again, since we're not going to do second reading until June anyway. So it doesn't make sense not to do it. There's not a time crunch here. I agree somewhat on the architecture. I felt like a lot of the architecture was too mosaic. I don't know if a lot of people have spent time in mosaic. It's a very cold place to walk through, really, for me, from an architectural point of view. I'd like to see more arseal, which is more the Pearson or even the Spectrum on the street level, something a little bit warmer. Love that the market square got bigger, because before I thought it was useless. Now it's big enough that it's actually something that can activate the area. So I was really glad to see that market square increase. I am a little bit concerned about the transportation flow with the lights and the crosswalks, but I don't think we really can talk to that until the staff at that time and had their transportation people look at it. I do know one thing, crosswalks will help, lights will help. Anything that slows the traffic down, lets people cross those streets are really, really good things. I'm really happy to see the realignment of the W O N D in this. And I see that, you know, I get what Ruth is saying, but the extra money for parks at $150,000 is something that could also help us continue to move forward with the CACT's long-term plan for the W O N D, which is a lot, there are a lot of improvements that they would like to plan out, that we currently don't have the funds and the CIP to do all of it. So there's definitely more things in that area that could be done with the W O N D, which is a linear park in that area as well. And there's always more things that could be done in the future. And the area plan for that part of the city, there's talk of having more facilities along the W O N D. I know some people don't like the idea of it, but having the train station and things like that, this is money that could go to that, that could make that a much friendlier area for people to stop along the W O N D, more like Vienna or Percyville, where you kind of want to stop because it's kind of interesting there. Try to do these really fast because I know we don't have a lot of time for all this. Oh, I don't think we have the information on this yet, but I'm really interested in the layout of these units. So to me, apartments make more sense than condos if it helps us fill the demographics hole we have. So from a planning perspective, we have this giant hole of these young professionals, these mid-20s and mid-30s. These are the people we really want in the city. These are people who would use the restaurants in this building and would go down the street to Mad Fox and whatever. And so I know in Northgate, they were really successful with their two bedrooms that definitely had two full bathrooms. So they got, we talked to the property manager there, we did, there was a little tour at one point. The EDA sponsored that tour. Anyway, and she was saying that the units with the two bedrooms with their own bathrooms were doing really well with roommates, because people had their own bedroom, their own bathroom was a nice way. So I'd like to know what those two bedrooms look like. Are they, because in some ways, and I also like to get an idea of what the rental rate's going to be, because in some ways it's more affordable for two young professionals to go into a two-bedroom than to rent at efficiency anyway. I used to be a big proponent of efficiencies, but since going to Northgate, I'm starting to think that the two-bedrooms are a better thing. So at some point, really, as we get into this, want to see details on the cost it's going to be for rental and what those units look like. And that's it.
I have a thousand comments, but I'll keep it very short. Most importantly, probably, from my questions over this weekend, don't understand what I think was at the EDC. I'm completely mystified, and maybe someone smarter than I can explain how this gets out of first reading without knowing whether the library is part of it, let alone the theater tax and that whole component. I don't know if it came to the planning commission whether we're looking at a building with 25,000 square feet of library or not 25,000 square feet of library. I think that's a technical question. My other comments all sort of go in one bucket, that I think this is an okay project. I still think it's way too large for being on a peninsula right next to the worst intersection in town, next to Park and West, and it just keeps getting larger. So all of the things, whether it's the too-high parking garage on Park, the traffic implications, the implications of the way they have sort of redone the traffic to the benefit of this project, I think will only make Park and West, and those people live on Grove, much, much worse. And I think it has to do with the scope and scale of the project. And I had this whole list of like 26 things, which really all come down to the thing, I think it's just way too large, and it just keeps getting larger. So, and maybe as we go along, I'll understand whether we are or are not moving the library.
I've got some concerns about the entrances off of Broad, and, you know, the widths and particularly the entrance, the smaller entrance, as far as identifying it within the plans, it was difficult to see the width of it and to see if it would be marked well enough to have it as an entrance. I'm really concerned about the parking garage sitting there as a big block on the West End Park. However, when I saw the design for the library, not that, you know, I have no idea what we'll decide to do about the library, but if you put that library picture back up, could you?
Yep.
Okay, there, that's the Park Avenue side, and then it goes over around. That is a heck of a lot looking better than the floor, the total parking garage. I mean, that's pretty nice-looking. And, you know, that could be, if it wasn't used for a library, it could be used for medical offices and things like that. I really, really like the looks of that. It just softens everything and makes it a good corner, is rounded and all such like that. But there was some talk somewhere in all the reading that I did was to have step backs on the Park Avenue side, even with the garages, so it would go, you know, get, you know, step back with each level. And I don't see that. Also, have some questions about some of the other things. There's a lot of differences in the write-ups. I understand the hotel's going to be lead equivalent, and then in one area it says the residential's going to be lead, and then another one it says/or equivalent. And I think that's a problem for that. But I am concerned about the severity of the design on Broad Street. But I really, I think some inclusion of something that looks like that is really a great idea. Probably. I've got 10 zillions, but, you know, give other people a chance.
I just want to echo the concerns of the rest of my colleagues. I'm very interested in understanding the subsidy associated with the theater, the traffic flow causes be some great concern, and the size and setbacks of the parking garage as well. That said, I am generally pleased to see, after going through the first step of this, the first stage of this process, how many of the comments were incorporated from the community. There was a great deal of unhappiness about entrances and exits on Park Avenue, the condos and how they were situated, and how it impacts the residential portion on Park. As everyone on the planning commission has pointed out, this is not a perfect solution yet, and I hope that we can make some changes here. And I, the comments that they have made, I want to delve into as we get further along in the process. But I do appreciate the effort of the developer to take into consideration those concerns and really make a project that appears on the surface to address many of those. So, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Rogers?
That's it.
Okay. Why don't we turn it over to the EDA, Mr. Navatney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for inviting the EDA to the work session tonight. We do have several colleagues here. I'll start with my colleagues, and also, I think there may be at least one more in the audience, Barry, if you might be able to come up to the table while others are talking, that'd be great. But please, Ed, if you could start.
Is that on?
I think getting this corner developed is really important. It gets development moving down in that direction. So I think just from the standpoint of continuity and keeping the momentum up, this is a really important project. I think the issues of the specifics of the facade and where the, you know, where the trash cans go, I think those are all important, and I think we want to pay attention to those, make sure that this aesthetically really works for everyone. But on the...
I think getting the, getting this corner developed is really important. It's, it gets development moving down in that direction. So I think just from the standpoint of continuity and keeping the momentum up, this is a really important project. The, I think the issues of the specifics of the facade and where the, you know, where the trash cans go, I think those are all important. And I think we want to pay attention to those, make sure that this aesthetically really works for everyone. But on the, on the larger point about the size of the project, we need density in some parts of the city, and if it doesn't go in places like this, I'm not sure where it's going to go. We've got restaurants moving in, and in order to keep those restaurants vital, we need people in the city. I think what Melissa said about paying attention to the design of the apartments is really important, so that we're attracting the, the demographics that we do have, that we do need in the city to kind of support that whole economic engine that we're looking for. But I don't think we ought to be afraid of density. Density is really what drives the economics. And if we start to squeeze down on the density, we change the economics of the project, and in the end, we make it a less desirable project overall. As far as the park, as far as the impact on the traffic patterns is concerned, there's a lot of concern about the Broadway and the Spectrum really impacting the local residents. And I haven't done a traffic study, but when I drive through there during parts of the day, I don't see that there's an impact. I could be wrong about that. We might take a look to see whether concerns that really arose during public hearings about those buildings really did turn out to be true. I'm not sure that we're going to, because, you know, people come in and out at different times, and the marginal increase, I don't really see has impacted us overall. So I, I would, in fact, rather see a little larger project, but maybe that's just me, because I think we're underpopulated here in order to serve the kind of businesses we want to attract into the city. And then finally, the more we can do to make this a LEED's building and environmentally advanced, energy advanced, there's been a lot of advances in the last few years on, on solar and on different types of materials. And Dan Z knows this better than I do, so I'm sure he's going to say something about it. How our roof is going to look, I think, is really important. If you go up on the top of some of our taller buildings and look down, you can see that we really kind of missed the boat with what we did with our roofs, in terms of drainage, number one, and then also, you know, maybe getting some, getting some energy-efficient equipment up there, like solar perhaps, solar hot water maybe, to really be advanced. But overall, I think it's, I think developing that area just is really important. So I'm really in favor overall of the project.
Hi, I'm John Sandos, and a new member to the E D A. But I enjoyed the presentation. I had a chance to look at all the drawings and the elevations. And I tend to agree with Ed that, that it is important to see this type of development and thinking beyond Mason Row and what we will do in terms of the property that we acquired from Fairfax County. You know, we are, we're in the process of defining or redefining some, some, you know, major elements of the city. I particularly liked your comment about attracting young professionals into the city. That has two benefits. One, the commercial benefit, but also thinking broader about our school system and, and the, and the school budget and all of this. Everything we do to increase the revenue in the city, particularly the commercial revenue, is going to help us with, with the city budget, and particularly with the school system, which is one of the bright spots of Falls Church. So I'm new here, but I hope to learn a lot more about this, and really did enjoy the presentation. Thanks.
Well, thanks to the developers for sticking with us for like the last two years. I believe this project's been going on for about two years. So, I think we all know that the design is what makes or breaks a project like this. And so I'm going to be very interested as this goes through the process, how the Planning Commission views this. And I'm just wondering if the Architectural Advisory Committee has had a chance to chime in yet, because I think they should be doing that next, to get their input on this. I have to feel that I kind of have some concerns with what Ruth was saying about the facade and the looks on the Park Avenue side. I think, I'm a big fan of that parking garage, and I think that's something that we need throughout the city, at least a couple of other spots. But I think it could be a little, look a little better. We see Fairfax City and Wilson Boulevard with those projects with some very nice integrated parking garages, and I think perhaps that that would be a very big beneficial to this project. I like the openness of the inner park, whatever we're calling it now, the festive circle or the festive square. And I think that's another major contributor to, to the project. From the fiscal standpoint, I'm hoping that Rick will take us through that tomorrow night in a little more detail. Really like to understand the numbers a little bit better, and, and so forth. I know the developer has been dealing with the Park Authority on the W O N D project, so they have been doing their homework in that regard. So overall, I look forward to going through the process, and perhaps the E D A will be providing more comments in the future. And I have to say that I do associate myself a lot of Ed's comments. So thank you.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and go through a few comments. I'll, I'll start with a few of the things that I, that I like about the project. And many of you may know, I've been generally a supporter of this project from the start, for, for the reasons that Ed and John mentioned. This is a good location to generate some new development. The tax revenue that's on that land right now is very low, and the net fiscal impact numbers put together by Rick and staff, I think are very important and very compelling from a, an annual basis and a per acre basis. I like the quantity of retail that's being proposed in the project. Not even talking about the theater, there's 50,000 square feet of additional retail proposed. That is no small task to endeavor and to try to put that much retail into a project. I hope it works, I really do. I do have a little bit of concern about the interior portions of it, but hopefully I will be, you know, proved wrong about any concerns there, and that will be very successful retail. But that gives you a lot of critical mass, starting at 50,000 square feet and above. And while I was not a, some, I wasn't a proponent necessarily of the theater, I'm a little worried about the traffic generated there, but that would add to the retail and the vibrancy, so I'm cautiously optimistic on that piece. And then the hotel is a very good, strong financial component of this project. And so I don't want to lose sight of that. The hotel was part of the original proposal and has carried through. So overall, I think there, there's a very strong fiscal story to tell for this project. That being said, again, I was a supporter from the start, but I think with every iteration, unfortunately, I've become a little bit less supportive, because I think there are certain things that have gone kind of in the wrong direction with this last proposal. And I did see it on Thursday night at the E D C meeting. The six-story garage on Park is probably the biggest issue that I see with this project. This is, this is no small potential issue. I spent some time this weekend going to Mosaic. They have a six-story garage as part of their project across from Mom's Organic Market. Not to say this garage would look exactly like that, but it was six stories, and it's big, and it's massive. And I don't know how you avoid that being a really, really, you know, negative component to this project, unless you were to, say, line it with single-loaded residential that went all the way up. So maybe the developer can push the garage back, line it with some residential or some other uses, maybe it's office or retail or all of those, and hide the garage, so the garage is completely on the interior.
That's right.
One of the other things that struck me with this proposal is that for the theaters, what's being proposed is that the project will excavate 30 feet down to put the theaters underground. And most of this parking is above ground, and could that be swapped? So that you're excavating anyway. You're sheeting, you're shoring, you're going down 30 feet. You could put three levels of underground parking where you're going to put the theater, where you're proposing to put the theater. So I would strongly encourage staff and the applicant to work together, to look and see if that's a possibility. And then maybe your six-story garage isn't six stories, maybe it's three stories. So I don't know if that's an option the applicant has already looked through, but it just strikes me that most of the cost of your underground parking is in the excavation and the sheeting, the shoring, the foundations. You're going to do that anyway for the, for the theater. So, so maybe that's an option to make this a little bit better. I think the other biggest concern I have is really the architecture. And I, going back to the initial proposals, I felt like the architecture was a lot stronger. And I think what I'm seeing here is a lot of very flat facade. There's not a lot of articulation to this building. The articulation is trying to be conveyed through uses of different colors and materials, but I, I think there's a long way to go on this architecture. I would point to Pearson Square, it was said earlier, as kind of a benchmark of good architecture. And I know we're, I'm speaking on behalf of E D A, or just my thoughts from E D A, but the architecture and the design matter to the economics. If this is a really ugly project, there, there may not be a lot of interest by other developers to develop the rest of the corridor, which is what we hope to achieve going forward, to better utilize our commercial properties. So I do think the architecture and design matter. I think this really has a long way to go. And so I would strongly encourage staff and the applicant to continue to work on that, to better articulate the building, and to really thoughtfully put together some nice facades, again, using Spectrum, or Pearson Square perhaps as a benchmark. Spectrum has some good qualities on the front side that you might want to emulate in some ways. Couple of things that were raised at the E D C meeting, and I'll just note them with, you know, the, the hope that staff will continue to dig into it. The numbers that were presented to us at that meeting struck me as the, the per-unit square feet was, was fairly large. And so I hope I'm wrong, but it sounded like they were, on average, very large units. I think it was 68% of the units are one-bedroom dens or two-bedrooms. I would like to see, in residential projects, to try to capture that younger professional market. I'd like to see more studios and ones, and maybe not so much the larger units. So that's something to think about. The, it was mentioned earlier, the, the trash and loading on West. I know this might sound like a small design detail, but I, I think the comments were right on. West is a very important street, it's a very important economic corridor, and putting a, a large trash bay and loading right there in the middle of the block, I, I think we'll find, if this is built, that, that's really going to create a lot of dead space, and it's going to be an issue to really activate the rest of the street front, and I think it's important. And as much as we like to believe that that trash door is going to be down when it's not in use, I can cite plenty of examples where that trash door stays open all day. And it looks ugly, and it smells bad, and it's potentially an issue. It's hard to locate that in a good spot in this project, because you have retail on both sides. I would just, again, encourage staff and the applicant to continue to think about that, if there's a better location for it that's not on, on West Street. As far as the library goes, it's really hard to comment, but I, I do wonder, you know, without a compelling community benefit package to bring the library to this building, I'm not sure why we would do it. The deal terms that were conveyed at E D C made it sound like it was just a straight lease deal. So that, to me, doesn't strike me as a big benefit to the city. So something to think about. One question, as far as the theater goes, you know, will the applicant be committing to a proffer that is, you know, this project will have a theater in it? That's obviously a really big component of what's being proposed. And so if that didn't happen for some reason, this project would change fundamentally. So. And then the last thing I would mention, this is something that I've raised in the past, especially with the quantity of retail here, I would love, love to see the applicant propose some kind of subsidies for a small amount of that retail space, to try to bring in some local tenants, maybe even try to bring back some of the tenants that will be displaced by this development. And, you know, maybe that subsidy is in a form of subsidized tenant improvements, or rent, or some combination of both. But there are retailers that are on this site today. There are retailers that are in other locations in the city that will ultimately be redeveloped and will lose their homes. And I really would like to see this project and overall the city try to figure out ways to help keep some of these small retailers in the city that really give a lot of the character to Falls Church. I, I don't want to redevelop everything and lose the character that we have today. And so I'm hopeful that something could happen there. That, I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go on to council? I don't know which side of the room would like to start, but, do we have a preference? All right, why don't we start with Ms. Oliver? She looks eager to go.
Well, I think it's really difficult in these three-way work sessions to say anything useful after the Planning Commission and the E D A have spoken. And I guess I could just say that I, I was really pleased that there was consistency in some of the comments that were made, and, and, you know, the economic benefits of this project are very key, and we have to keep that in mind. I just want to frame my comments in the sense of place-making. To me, that's really important, almost as important as the economic benefit, because I think that, in the long run, what we want to do is create a sense within Falls Church that this is a place that we want to spend time, that we want to be. And I know that there are concerns about the traffic, and I think that this intersection, it's going to have a traffic problem no matter what, and we need to figure out what we can do to make people stop, and not just drive through and try to speed through here. And, and make an effort to, to, you know, do as much as we can to mitigate that. I'm a little bit concerned about the transition to the neighborhood, and I think that that's going to be an issue. And people that want to keep the small-town residential feel, they're not going to be happy with some of this. But the consolidation, the linking of these different sites to create a place, I think it's really critical for us to realize that there's a real benefit. If you go back and walk that site and look at the pictures of what it looks like now, there isn't a lot there that makes you want to come and spend any time there. If you're driving through, all you kind of want to do is get through that light as quickly as you can. And so I, I think the, one of the key things that's just kind of missing in terms of the place-making and the issues that are going to come up with the traffic and the neighborhood transition, it's a little bit of the architecture on that backside. And I, if, if putting the library there takes that parking structure up two additional levels, that is just one more reason that, you know, we really don't, you know, we really should consider whether or not that makes sense at all, because I don't want that parking structure to go any higher than it has to. And I'd like to see architecture or plantings being done in a way to kind of camouflage that. If there was a way to make it look like houses going up a hill rather than a stark wall, you know, that, that might fool some people who don't have their glasses on into thinking that it's a hillside rather than a...
A little winding trail.
Little winding. So...
Some great vines.
Again, it's just for me, it's about the place-making. There's an awful lot about the proposal here that does create a sense of place and, and could be a real benefit. But I think we need to tweak a few more things to get there.
Thank you. Ms. Connelly?
Thank you. Every time I see this project, I like it more, and I do like this iteration very much. Ms. White, if you can go back to the view of Mason Lane from West Street? Is there another one of that?
This one, yeah, the without the library, maybe?
Yeah, the one without the library. And this sort of goes to what Ms. Oliver was saying about the place-making. There's that. No, that one?
There you go.
That one, that, that looks so nice. I like that very much. And I, and then when the next one after that was the parking garage, I thought, oh, that I don't like as much. But that one right there really does make a nice place, and I think that is what we're going for in Falls Church. I would be remiss, as the liaison to the Housing Commission, not to mention that the concessions for affordable dwelling units don't exactly meet the city's affordable housing policy. And we should look at those and rework those so that they do meet the affordable housing policy. And then my other questions are just about the parking. Because the concern was, we don't want to have a parking entrance on Park Avenue, where are the parking entrances? How do you get to the parking garage? And how many ins and outs do we have? I know we have two on Broad Street...
And one on West.
And one on Mason Lane, is that? I know we have two on Broad Street and one on Mason Lane, is that?
Stand up for the camera.
Suzanne. Can you go down another slide? Okay. Entrances would be directly off of Mason Lane. You enter the parking garage off of Mason Lane here.
Okay.
You can enter it from this level as well, and you would actually enter the parking as well off of West Broad Street here. Those are the only access points.
Okay. And then is the parking separated for apartment, retail, or?
That's correct. The residential apartments, or the residential parking is down below, and you would access it from this entrance ramp here. All of the retail would access it from this sort of counterclockwise parking garage that ascends up to the piece that you see along Park Avenue.
Okay. And then the 20% parking reduction that you're asking for, is that because some of it is shared parking and some of it, you're assuming, is apartments that will have fewer?
It's shared parking.
It's shared parking in the retail area?
In the retail area, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Brooke?
Thank you. I think just one point I wanted to clarify before I get into my own comments regarding the EDC and the library, I think there was a notion that it should not be bifurcated, meaning that, you know, once the approvals, the decision about the library needs to happen sooner than later. I think that was the point. If that was not clear, I think that's where the consensus was. But there wasn't necessarily clear consensus because we didn't reach it about what should happen with the library. Two, just going on to my comments, what I just kind of want to go back to in an effort not to keep changing the ball, if you will, with this project, I go back to the motion that I put forward that had unanimous support, that essentially laid out five or six different points. So I'm going to go through those and tailor my comments accordingly. So the first point was securing a second anchor. I'm glad to see that we're having further discussions about the hotel, that it's actually part of the submission. I think what's going to be key, it's also key to the fiscal impact, from what I heard from staff this evening, is it's going to be very dependent on who the operator is. So I think we're going to need to have ways of addressing that, whether it's done through a third party and kept confidential, which I'm sure is going to be something that's going to be key. We've got a mechanism of doing that, we've done that before to look at the performance, so we know that, and we have a better set of what we're expecting from the economic impact model. But then yet, acknowledging that there may be confidential negotiations going on between the developer and the operator. So I think there's a way that we can work with the developer of getting the information we need to really get a better sense of the impact model there. Two, I believe Mike alluded to this, as far as the key to getting the anchors in place, I think our city attorney is going to need to work with Mr. Lasso on some of those proffers and how they're spelled out to make sure that both the hotel and theater are locked in, if you will, to the utmost certainties we can get. And there's ways of doing that, and I think we're going to need lots of discussions about that as we move forward. Two was the issue of density enassing. One thing I'll say is, you know, certainly this area of the city, I think there's some level of density that can happen, but I think it's going to be, a lot goes into what type of density we're talking about, what the residential-commercial mix is, and what the enassing is, and I'll get to those shortly. But I think that there was a sense, at least in the motion that was passed, that there would be some acknowledgement of the density. I think in my clarifying comments that I had made, even though they were not necessarily directly on the motion, was that I wanted to see a reduction in the residential density, and by that I meant the unit number, because that's what our focus is on the economic model. From what I understand from staff, it's not necessarily based on square footage, it's based on unit count that gets inputted into the model and then generates the modeling from there. And by my count, we have a 6% increase in overall unit count. And I don't think that's necessarily going in the right direction, but we can talk about that in a minute when I get back to the parking structure. So three was working with staff on the list of 31 items that were identified in the last memo. I'm not going to hit those points, I'm going to leave that up to staff to kind of keep track of where we're at with those various discussions. And then four was working with Planning Commission, Boards and Commissions to address comments. I think some of those issues have been, at least we're making progress, such as traffic, where the signals are going. But I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done on this aesthetics and enassing. Now, when I looked at this, and again, I really defer to my Planning Commission, Commissioner colleagues, I just want to reiterate some of the points that Ruth made. When I first looked at the submission, my family and I do spend some time at a very similar project to this, maybe on a larger scale, in Fairfax County. And I have to say, when I looked at some of the material types, they looked very similar of what's coming off that building, like, literally.
Yep.
Some pieces of it that I like, like the wood trim that they have, and I saw it, lo and behold, in here. But I just think, again, the best way I can describe it is that there's a harshness about it, there's not a Falls Church sense about it. I think the overall architecture needs some significant work, but I'm not the person to ask, other than, you know, my knee-jerk reaction is, something is missing, it's really not coming together for me. But I think that's something that we need to work on. I hope that the meeting with the neighborhoods are continuing. That was number five. It sounds like some of the neighborhood concerns were taken into account, but I'd like to get a better sense from staff and also from the neighborhood about what that's happening. And then on the issue of local businesses, I think that's critical, so I share Mike's comments on that. Sounds like at least one business may be relocated. I'm very curious to see what's happening with our other businesses that are doing very well. Some of those are new businesses that, you know, without getting into specifics of those businesses, I think are newcomers, which, you know, I thought their business models were, you know, you know, I was hoping for the best, and they actually have done exceedingly well in the city. And I'd like to see if there's a way we can continue to make sure that those businesses remain in the city and possibly part of this project, should it go forward. And then I kind of want to turn to the parking structure, which I think architecturally was lacking, to say the least. I think it's a problem flat-out, having the six-story building as close as it is to park. Parking has to go somewhere. I like Mike's idea of, is there a way that we can line it with residential units? That may be one way of addressing it, and taking residential units off. And this is what I meant, you know, can we think about it in the concept of what we were talking about before? I think Mike also mentioned sort of lack of articulation, which I think is absolutely there, minus the Mason Row, which I think looks good on how that piece is done. But there may be a way of moving some of the enassing, reducing the residential density, but also putting some of the units, if we can, possibly lining it along that parking structure. That may be one way to go, and then breaking up the enassing. And then two, I'd be very interested in finding out if there's a way of getting, on the first floor of that parking structure, whether it's concepts like portico retail, which we've done somewhere else, is there a way of doing first-floor retail on the bottom of that parking structure and wrapping it around? Some concepts like that to actually, you know, it's still going to be a parking structure, but reducing some of the overall impact of that and the visual on park to give it a little bit more attractiveness to the extent that we can. So I think that just needs a lot more work and development. I don't know if the mayor wants to have Council Wayne on the library now, or swing back around to that.
Why don't we go ahead and do that at the end?
And then, as far as scheduling, if this, if the census to go forward, I do think that it needs full vetting, and I think our discussions have normally turned on first and second reading, and I do think this needs to, A, needs a full, I think there was essentially two options with first reading, and that was one with a staff report and one without the staff report, depending on timing. I don't want to go down the road of not having a staff report in full by the time we go forward. So I'd like to see a staff report because council's comments and further directions may come from the staff report. I don't want to be doing that with one hand tied behind my back without having the benefit of staff's expertise. So I feel pretty strongly about that if we are going to proceed. And it's an if until I hear back from my other council colleagues, but I wouldn't certainly want to do it without a staff report in hand.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you. First of all, the notion of developing that corner more extensively is clearly a positive development. Secondly, the commercial uses are the kind that will generate significant revenue, and there's been a major improvement there in terms of the addition of the movie theater, in my view. The residential component, I have, continue to have doubts about, considering that we're thinking about building a new high school because the current one is overcrowded. We've already got 600 units, residential apartment units that are in the ground and being built now. It seems to me difficult to justify more the exact same kind of unit. The, where we don't have other sorts of residential units in the city at this point, in any large numbers, condos, senior housing, et cetera. So it seems to me a lot of more residential of the kind that we've already got, a certain amount in the pipeline. The next issue would be that it seems to me, overall, to lack sensitivity to its context. Whether you describe it as a design issue, or you describe it as a facing in the building issue, it seems to me focused inward rather than outward, and just seems to lack any sensitivity to the residential context or the park across the street. So I just, it's the sort of thing that could almost plop down anywhere in Northern Virginia, and I just don't see where it has any real sensitivity to its context. And then, very quickly, I will take a minute on the library, if that's okay, because maybe it'll shorten things later, or you want to hold that?
Why don't we hold that and just sort of go around the room at the end, if you don't mind?
Those are pretty much my comments. Thanks.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the applicant for working with the community over an extended period of time to, I think, improve a project that started out some time ago in a manner that was underwhelming to a number of folks on the council. Big credit to the concept of consolidating land at this intersection. The perhaps biggest barrier to walkable, attractive development in the city is small cut-up parcels that we cannot pull together. So Mr. Shreve's property, I think, is a good example of where we hope to go as we proceed to economically revitalize the Broad and Washington corridors. Initially, it came to us as a fairly standard, I think, ground-floor retail, residential above, drugstore at the corner sort of project. And I think everybody can, I hope, see that it's progressed considerably from there with multiple commercial components, hotel, theater, an outdoor market square, retail that has a real prospect of thriving, and a residential component that is consistent with what the market is telling us, there is still a market for in our area. I'd like to put my other comments in the form of questions, I suppose. As someone who lives not too far away from this proposed project, I'm keenly aware of the traffic and parking issues. Would like a little more information about something that was discussed earlier, which was increasing the lane capacity of Northwest Street to help handle increased traffic flow. That was discussed earlier, something could be done with striping. But I would actually ask if it's possible to consider shaving even a few feet off of the west side of the development to actually increase the physical space of Northwest Street to help traffic queue and move more freely there. The question about parking, at the EDC meeting the other night, we were given a presentation by an expert on parking requirements in our area, and Falls Church's requirements were all held to be far or well, at least above most other jurisdictions, and certainly well above any model of smart growth. So when we, you know, represent to the public that the applicant is seeking an 18.5% reduction in parking, I'd like a better understanding of if that's our current parking requirements. That's one thing. If it's a parking count that's going to be related more to kind of standard best practices for smart, urban, walkable, encouraged walking and biking development, then that's something else. I think it is important, because we are what we are, we do not have a metro running under our main roads, that we do have adequate parking, but I think it's important that we not oversupply parking. And perhaps more than the actual number of parking spots, I think the nature of the movements in the garage itself, the complaints that I hear from folks have less to do with, gee, I can't find a parking spot, to, you know, I can't fit my car in between those pillars in some of the garages that have been built in some of the newer buildings. So I'd be particularly interested in the interior movements in the parking garage. Finally, on the fiscal impact, can't really improve much on what Ed Salzberg and Mr. Sandoz said. The fiscal impact, it's just very important for people to understand that our model, which has been worked now over a period of years, and is a pretty sophisticated model, it takes into consideration public service costs, including school costs, and shows, according to what Mr. Fuller said, a five to seven cent benefit every year, five to seven cents on the tax rate, 1.8 to two-plus million. Aesthetic concerns are very important, and I think we should resolve to apply the best minds we can get to make whatever parking garage we have, you know, the most awesomely disappearing parking garage in America. And I think we can do that. I mean, as you go around to other communities like Alexandria and Leesburg, you know, you see parking garages, and you don't see them. All of a sudden, there it is. I mean, I think it is, it is just possible to do this, I think. So aesthetic concerns are important, and we have great minds to apply to that. Therefore, my focus is on the fiscal impact, and I just, as the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, getting ready to spend with my colleagues the next six weeks, you know, in the trenches of the budgets we do every year, even at the lowest fiscal impact, 1.8 million this project would throw off, that would fully pay for the requested increase in teacher salaries for this coming fiscal year. The schools need 1.6 million, they say, to, you know, put us on a track to be competitive with Arlington's teachers. Well, this project would pay for that, right here. I mean, that may sound sort of transactional, but it's just plain facts. And I guess the message that I'm trying to communicate is, you know, if we're going to compete with Arlington, then to some degree, we need to find a way to earn as Arlington has earned. We don't have to develop as intensely as Arlington does, but we have to do, in the Falls Church way, some serious, consistent, annual earning of money, rather than simply resorting to taking more money from people who are already paying, I think, handsomely, as they should, to live in our great community, but they're paying an adequate amount of taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Zane?
I think we have an abundance of material here tonight to work with, and I think that over the last year and a half, nearly two years, that we've known about this project, it's only gotten better. I see the issues that are being presented, and I think part of it is the fault of the renderings. are being presented, and I think part of it is the, is the fault of the renderings. I think these are more representational than some end product, and so I think that we can work with, with what's been presented to us, so we can refine it, we can shape it. And so far, I've seen great willingness on the part of the applicant to address our concerns, and to come to realize that, that what we want, in terms of the city, is also good for their projects. So, I'm looking forward to working with them on that. And beyond saying that I think that there can be more environmental, sustainable components associated with this, tonight's probably not the night to address them all. I am looking forward to listening to the concerns of our citizens and the board members, and will pledge to do my best to help resolve those to the satisfaction of everyone in the city, as well as to the benefit of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zee. I've got a few comments that I'd like to go over, and then we'll have a discussion about the library, if we can. One, I, this is an area that I, that needs development, or redevelopment. The developer has made progress, they have made improvements. I think they've certainly been listening to folks, and we appreciate that. The project is common fits and starts. You know, it seems like sometimes it takes a step forward, maybe a half step back. I do have some concerns I'd like to share with you tonight. One is the garage. I think six stories on an established residential neighborhood is just way too big and way too close. I would invite all of you to drive by the Hilton Garden End Garage on the way home, which is also on Park, which is two stories. This is going to be three times as high, and probably fairly similar setback as proposed, and I think it's a real intrusion into this established residential neighborhood. I think it's too close to the street, it's too high. I'd like to see it, whatever, wherever it ends up, landscape with evergreen trees, not with deciduous trees. I'd like to see grills with vines growing up, just to really have this thing recede off into the horizon, maybe a brick facade. It looked like there may be one shown on the rendering we saw. Dark sky lighting, so that the light is not spilling out in the neighborhoods. So, that's the garage. I am also still concerned about the number, size, and mix of the units. It seems like the project, since it first came to us, has gotten bigger, and really hasn't come down much, despite that being an expressed concern of many on council. I am concerned about loading and trash. I don't think they're where they ought to be right now, and I hope you can take a look at that and find a better place for those things. I would share the concern about the orientation and the tie-in with the trail and the park. I think the project really doesn't give much to either one of them, is what I've seen, at least tonight. That I think bike share ought to be a component of this. You're on a major transportation hub, which is WND Trail, and it really doesn't seem like that's given much, much consideration. I'd like to see outdoor seating areas delineated, so we know where you're intending to have outdoor seating, how the outside of this project will be enlivened. I think Mr. Snyder said, there is a lot of thought given to the inside, which is great, but the mosaic, when you drive by that, it really does feel a bit like a fortress. And I think we really need to have the outside of this project be alive as well, and maybe that is the intention. I just, I'd like to see that with delineated outdoor seating spaces. I wouldn't, I'm going to reserve judgment on traffic flow. I think you've made some improvements as far as traffic goes, but it's really hard to tell how that's going to work, and I don't think staff's had a chance yet to be able to analyze your traffic situation. I think also, we should be hearing from Mr. Shields coming up about a plan for parking in the area. Is that right, Mr. Shields? Maybe not tonight, but in the near future. So, I think that's a really important part of our consideration, to know how traffic from this project may spill over again to this established residential street. So, we'll be hearing from you, hopefully, in the near future, about that.
I could speak briefly about it tonight, if you'd like.
Okay. I'd say, if we can, maybe you could give a brief presentation about that, and then we'll have some discussion, primarily with council, about the library location, if we can. Would you like to do that now?
I did have the opportunity. I was invited to one of the houses on Park Avenue, again, a second time, and the residents have modified their request, and we're looking at that. But the basic discussion is to have a permit parking regime on the north side of Park Avenue. It would be unrestricted parking on the south side of Park Avenue, and we just need to work through the details of that. But that's the basic construct, and we just need to set the hours that would be appropriate and enforceable, and also work through with the church in terms of what their concerns would be. And I think we can get there.
Okay. I'm not sure tonight's probably the time to really go in-depth with that, but you are working with the neighbors and the community as a whole to try to work out something that seems to work for most folks. Why don't maybe we spend a time coming up in the coming weeks, for you to give us a more in-depth proposal, what's, what's going on, but at least work is underway. Okay, great. I think it's also useful, particularly on the council side of things, to have a little discussion about the library and folks' desire to see the library move, or maybe not see it move, because I think it will inform our conversation as to what we do forward, how resources are expended, staff time is expended, library board time is expended going forward, or whether this is something that there is a desire to pursue, or whether there's not so much desire for that. And I guess I'd like to invite council particularly, but others as well, to weigh in on whether there is a desire to pursue moving the library to this location. Do folks feel willing and able to discuss that tonight on council? I'm going to look at you, Ms. Oliver. Do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share with us tonight?
I need to go first, do you?
Sure.
The library board has not formally discussed the prospect of moving the entire library. So, I would want to hear from them, and I'm not sure how quickly they're going to be meeting. I, I personally have the sense that there's not a lot of enthusiasm for that idea. My main concern at this point is the thought that moving the library here would increase the parking structure, which is something that many people have mentioned they're not interested in. And I personally have an anecdotal sense of the community, that the community does not want to move the library. So, I would say, in general, I would like us to reach a decision on this, and I personally am not interested in moving the library here.
Ms. Carnley, any thoughts?
I do have thoughts. I think that adding the library to this project is sort of an unnecessary add-on. I think that the developer, as Mr. Baruch went through the list of things that we asked of them, did all of that. I think the, I'm not necessarily opposed to moving the library someplace else. I really like it where it is, but it could indeed move someplace else. I don't think it makes sense to put the library in a building that would be leased, because we have land that we have. So, it would be better to have our buildings in places that we own. So, I do not have a great appetite for moving the library.
Mr. Baruch?
Thank you. So, a couple of thoughts. Thank you, a couple of thoughts. So, I do want to hear from the library board, from Ms. Oliver's comments, and my understanding of the letter is that they haven't fully addressed this particular question, which would be moving the library in whole to Mason Row. So, before I sort of said my final bit on it, I'd like to get that information, but I'd like to get it sooner than later, sooner than first reading, if that's the direction that we're going to go in. And the reason for that is, is twofold. One, I don't want staff sort of spinning on this issue unnecessarily, and utilizing public time, money to pursue this option, and there would be staff time, from what I understand, but possibly consultant time, that would need to be brought in if we are going to explore this option further. But most importantly, I think the community, if we're going to actually ask for feedback from the community about this project, they have to know what it is. Can't be an option that's sort of dang, dangling out there, similar to the notion that we need to get a full understanding of what the theater is, how it's going to be locked into the project, and how the hotel, the two anchors, which are really what this project, in my view, is about how they all fit together. So, I think we owe that to the community as well, rather than kind of leaving this issue hanging out there. So, timing-wise, if at all possible, I'd like to hear the feedback. Again, I think by the 23rd is when we were talking about possible first reading of that. However, if that's not possible, what I've talked to the mayor about is, I'm happy to put forward motion, and I've mentioned this to staff as well, one way or the other, of are we looking at moving the library, or aren't we looking at moving the library to this location? I think that we need to have a council vote on it, unless we're in some type of clear consensus tonight, or shortly thereafter, about it very, very soon. What I'll say is, right now, I'm not in any way convinced the library should move from its current location. I'm not seeing placemaking, if you will, at this current location that we were talking about in Mason Row. I don't think that is where the library should go. That's just my personal view at this point. But what I will say absolutely I'm not in favor of, is essentially providing another subsidy to this project. Losing retail, and then paying full lease on something where we don't have any equity left in it. This is not like an office space, where you can find other office users. You can't move your library multiple times, you know, in a 20-year period. That's very expensive to do. And I'm not hearing the developer coming forward that the library would be a concession, or that they would be helping absorb the building cost and subsidizing rent, given all the waivers that they're asking for, which is essentially every waiver possible under our code. So, this discussion about renting it at full retail value is just, is just dead on arrival, putting aside any of the planning issues. And at least that's notionally been what's presented to me. So, I'm, that, that's just a non-starter.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks very much. Let me go over a couple of the concerns that I have with the current library CIP proposal, and then that will help illustrate why I was interested. And I appreciate the developers came forward with an alternative, and then I'll discuss that alternative. First, it seems to me that spending $11 million for about 7,500 square feet and some necessary renovations, that will result in a library which is probably not what the modern library architecture indicates to serve future generations, seems to me to lack value. It's one thing if it were $2 or $3 million, and you'd buy time. It's an entirely another thing to invest something like $11 million into the existing building, including the necessary parking. It seems to me to lack ultimate value to the taxpayers. Secondly, building new was rejected because that was too expensive. So, would a third alternative be, okay, there's, is there a private development that you could achieve a modern, a truly modern library architecturally, one capable of serving the future, and do it at a lesser cost? And regrettably, the proposal we have in front of us doesn't do that. Number one, it would cost more. Number two, it's a rental as opposed to a condo, where the city does not have direct ownership, which is what I would think would be a good proposal. The third issue is that I was hoping that it would, in any development, reduce the residential component, rather than be added on. So, for all these reasons, I don't support the current option. And I continue to have honest misgivings about this CIP project that we have, whether it's a good expenditure of the taxpayers' money, in terms of what you get out of it. And then, I'm mindful of what the library board has said. I take that very seriously, about increased operations. I had never envisioned a situation where we would lose the existing site. I always envisioned the splitting of functions, and it would appear that that has additional operational costs. So, I, I don't support the proposal, the alternative proposal, library proposal in front of us. But I think we have some additional work to do, to convince me and others in the, and I think some others in the community, that the CIP proposal really is a good expenditure of taxpayer money. So, for, that's kind of where I am right now on this. I do think the public should have a little more opportunity to take a look at all of this. I don't think we should vote on anything tonight. I don't think that would be inappropriate. I think there needs to be a formal motion. I think there needs to be a hearing. The public can't weigh in tonight. Perhaps the, you know, things may change. But at this point, I have misgivings about the current proposal, and I'm unsatisfied with the option that's being presented, at least so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at the library through two lenses. One is a, one of fiscal responsibility, and others generational responsibility. On the fiscal side, the library board, after much money was spent on a consultant, who did, I thought, a very thorough job and a good report, recommended last year that we raise and rebuild a new library on the side of the current one, to the tune of something like $20 million. That idea went through a very lengthy process of, you know, community input, and when it arrived at the feet of the planning commission, it was not greeted warmly. And, and last year's CIP, we basically put a placeholder in there, and kicked the can down the road for further discussion. The library came back with the plan that Vice Mayor Snyder discusses, which I can't really improve on the way he described it. I think, although many people have worked very hard to try to come up with a plan that they perceive is affordable, it falls well short of the mark of getting good value for our long-term money. So, from a fiscal point of view, I'm, I'm interested in what can be done to give us some better options on the library. There's an option before us. As far as I know, we've not undertaken any negotiations with the applicant about the numbers that have been presented. I agree with Vice Mayor Snyder that we want to own it, not rent it. The square foot number that's quoted is 495. I think that's, you know, way too high. In other words, I guess what I'm saying is, if we wanted to drive a harder bargain, I think we could get a brand-new library that would last for 30 to 40 years, if not longer, for a price tag that would be pretty similar to the $11 million that we're going to apparently consider paying to provide a renovated space where we are now. So, the generational responsibility component is, you know, I remember those discussions that Mr. Lasso talked about in the late 1980s, about what are we going to do with our little library? It's not big enough. Our city's growing. We're going places. We need a better library. You know, we were going to put it underground at Cherry Hill. I mean, we came up with all sorts of crazy notions of what to do. And finally, we just did what we did. And, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice little addition that we did. Cleaned it up. I remember going to the party and ate the cake, and that was 1992, and it lasted about 10 years. And we were back at it. You know, wow, the HVAC doesn't work. Man, the place is cramped. Steph's got no room. Place is growing like crazy. What are we going to do? You know, I just feel a generational responsibility to, to bite into this thing, and to resolve it in a way that will, you know, endure for 25 to 30 years. At a time when interest rates are near to zero, I think people are going to look back upon us very dimly 10, 12 years from now, if we do not take some, you know, visionary action on what is, you know, in my view, a core facility in our community, and, and just deserves better than, than what we have before us right now. So, I guess I would ask, as relates to this project that we keep on the schedule that Mr. Baruch suggested, and before we do the first reading, get some hard numbers, engage in some negotiations, see if we can drive a better bargain, and most of all, please let us talk to the family. You know, Mr. Lasso there said something that I never knew, which is 20 years ago, the family maybe was interested in looking at some other possibilities. I cannot tell you a number of times that I've asked, you know, have we talked to the family? What did the family think about the covenants, the deeds? I just want to get more information on that, put the city attorney to work, finding out what our rights and flexibilities are. Talk to the family, ask them if they're interested in, you know, some kind of arrangement that would produce a better library building than, than we are now being given, I think, in the CIP proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Zee?
Thank you, Mayor. At the very beginning, I, of this process, I, when faced with this current project, and all of its changes, I said to anyone that would listen that we had one anchor, now we've added two. added two and two and a half, maybe with all the retail ones, at 50,000 square feet. And I resisted any temptation to think about place making with respect to what I know, what I've experienced, what I've seen in other places where they, quite frankly, put a library as part of a development. They make them work and they're lovely. But I've come back to that, perhaps, original point of view, which is that this is a complex project already. And maybe the time to put a library here is best avoided. It doesn't mean I don't want to see it there. I just don't think that we're capable of putting it there and making it work. It requires lots of work on the side of the city, and I haven't seen any great enthusiasm, probably based on the fact that we need lots of work to make this happen. And I think the developer, the applicant, is really busy trying to make what they have happen. And so I hate to say that this may be one library too far, but it appears to be that I would like to have a conversation with the general public about whether this library project that we have is one that's appropriate. Certainly, other places that are less constrained. The George Mason Site, for example, could be a great place for something like that. But as far as this goes, I would urge us to come to a rapid decision on whether we pursue this option or not. And keeping in mind what my colleague, Mr. Brueck, said, that if we can have full information sufficient to be decisional and to look at things that are optically understandable, then we can then have an informed decision to make on this. Otherwise, I'm inclined to say, let's forget about it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Brueck has a very quick comment, then I'll make a few comments.
Just, again, one point, I think that's, since I said what I said, I just, with Vice Mayor Snyder's comments regarding the CIP, I just don't want there to be a public notion that, you know, somehow the council's voted on the CIP, which includes the library as one component of it. I think that's going to be an area that myself and other council members are going to have lots of discussion and questions about. So I just don't want there to be a notion, at least for me, that somehow by not wanting to pursue the option of the library at this site at this particular time indicates that, you know, I'm somehow wedded to the CIP as it currently stands. I think there needs to be a lot of discussion further about that. I think those are two different issues in my mind and need to be structured as two different conversations. One, what we're doing with the CIP as a whole, in addition to how it relates to the library, rather than trying to, rather than taking a look at this together. And then two, I wanted to just echo Dan Z's comments on this. This project has got a lot going on right now. It's very, very complex. We haven't even dove into some of the key components, which are, you know, the hotel anchor and the theater anchor, and how we're going to have those pieces locked down, if you will, and trying to add in a library. Not that we, as a city, aren't capable of doing it, if that's where we want it to go, but it's not in the comp plan right now. The surveys are showing that most people, and I'm sure the library board will correct me on this, but from what I understand, there's a general sense of wanting to keep the library here. We haven't had full discussion about it. And if we are going to truly explore this option, we're going to be months and months down the road. And it's not something that we've sort of talked about in the community. It's a fundamental change. And I have to say, as one council member, there is value in keeping a campus structure in Falls Church, and that's City Hall, the library. And we are developing critical mass with some developments that are coming online. And there is a sense of heart of the city here between the farmer's market and everything that happens around this campus that needs to be maintained, especially some projects that we're going to be looking down the road. So I think rather than keep exploring an option which council members may not support at the end of the day, you know, before, you know, we need to get a sense of what minimal data do we need. I'm not in favor at this point of having staff, unless council weighs in, talking to the family. I think at minimum, what we need is library board to weigh in. I believe Planning Commission has unanimously weighed in and said they don't want to see the library moved. So that's a key piece of information. So I think we can check that box, that we have that piece. We don't have the piece from the library board on this particular question. I think that we need that piece. And I do think that we need some quick sort of knee-jerk view from planning staff about, does it make sense, given what's currently envisioned for the downtown area planning process and other small area planning process, to move the library? Is it some, is it an area we should go, or does it make sense about keeping the library where it is? So I think, you know, we need those small pieces of info. And then if there's a sense that, yes, this is an option we want to explore, then directing staff further. But without that, I don't want to have discussions or one-offs between developer and council members or staff and, you know, the family and the heirs and trying to just go down various rabbit holes and Christmas treeing this thing, and we never move on sort of what's before us.
Thank you very much. Let me give you my comments, and then hopefully we can move on. First off, I understand the concern and that folks aren't fully satisfied with the proposal, the library proposal for renovation. And I understand that, and I appreciate the creative thinking that's gone behind trying to find alternatives that are better. I just don't happen to think that this is one of them. I think the library location is a great location. It's synergistic with City Hall, Cherry Hill Park, farmer's market, and also all sorts of other activities that occur around there. It's wildly successful. The place is full of kids on Saturday and Sunday mornings. And so I just, I don't think you mess with that. I don't think you mess with success. And so I wouldn't be supportive of moving the library to Mason Row at this point. I think also trying to operate two facilities is going to be really expensive, and it's not going to be the same, splitting something in half and having two locations, just generally doesn't work. You still got to pay the electric bills. You still got to pay all the operating expenses. And so I think it's going to be substantially more expensive to operate two facilities. So again, for those reasons, I like the library exactly where it is. Why don't we move on, unless there's others who want to speak? Sure, Ms. Rogers. Why don't we briefly hear from others, if anyone else feels compelled to speak?
Mayor, I'd just like to clarify something about the CIP and the library project in it. I'm sure you'll get lots of information before you have to vote on it, the final vote on the CIP, from the library board. But as you know, we recommended a unanimous amount, I mean, unanimously recommended an amount in the CIP that is not $11 million. It is $8 million. The $3 million that is being added on, for some reason, to the library project is not part of the library project. It's a totally separate parking garage that would be used for the library if it becomes built, but it would also be used for public parking and for the condo unit that's currently using it as a parking, a one-level parking lot. So to add that into the library project is not what we recommended. We recommended an $8 million project, and you will get the information from the library as to what that will include. The $3.4 million is totally separate.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, and I would just add, we spent a lot of time on this in the CIP, and really that was driven from a work session that we had here, where it was a question of whether this was a lot of bang for our buck. And I think we concluded unanimously that it was a lot of bang for our buck, because a lot of that $8 million project is renovation, which really needs to take place anyway, essentially, some of it having to do with ADA accessibility. And so I think the feeling was that sort of the dollars per foot and the renovation cost was actually significantly cheaper than what was being done, for example, at the schools, which was concurrent. So I think we felt like that was a terrific use of the money. I will also say, anecdotally, because we, you know, didn't have the opportunity to go out and do a Gallup survey on this, there is an overwhelming feeling from every comment that we got, both in the survey that Cindy did, but just in public comments, to leave the library where it was. So, I mean, it was those two, sort of two issues why it was, you know, not easy, because, like I said, we did spend a ton of time on this single issue for us to come to kind of this unanimous conclusion on the library. The parking garage is a separate project, and because there is a campus here and there was a feeling that we needed to have parking for City Hall, parking for a lot of different uses, that, you know, is not, they're not married together. So just as a clarification, not trying to sell anybody anything.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead and wind up this discussion? I think the last thing to discuss is when we might discuss this again, and if we can make that very brief. It sounds like the 23rd. Is that a time when the staff report, was it the 23rd? That is a date that the staff could go ahead and have a staff report available to us for consideration?
Right.
Okay, so is there any objection to going ahead and planning our next consideration of this on the 23rd? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of heads nod yes. If anyone opposes it, go ahead and speak. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and plan for the 23rd for our next discussion? And with that, why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break and let our colleagues head off to the various places they are going to go to and thank them. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's great to have you with us. We appreciate all your comments and thoughtfulness. Yeah, thank you so much. All right, let's go ahead, and if we can, everyone have a seat. Let's go ahead and wrap up our discussion and head on out for the evening. Mr. Shields, can you discuss the next item, which is I-66 Inside the Beltway? And after that, I would like Vice Mayor Snyder to offer his thoughts for the benefit of the council.
Okay, and I'd like to just turn it over to Cindy, and she'll give a brief staff report, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
This is a regional effort with Arlington and Fairfax County responding to the Secretary of Transportation, Arby Lane's request to have our three localities designate a recommendation for a regional partner. The state will actually select the regional partner. And this is to start planning to implement Inside the Beltway I-66 multimodal improvements when there's revenue sufficient to do it after all of the tolling projects. And so I've worked with Fairfax and Arlington to put the proposal together that's before you this evening. We have talked to the staff, Executive Director of NVTC, who's willing to be designated as the regional partner. And you'll see we've itemized on line 46 to 64 the four primary reasons why we think NVTC is the proper regional partner. And on behalf of the City of Falls Church, they've served us well as fiscal agents in leading some of our transportation projects, which gives us a great staff resource expansion. This is set up for the council's consensus to have the mayor sign this letter. We'd also welcome it if you prefer it to be a vote. It does need to be executed tonight because we need to respond to the secretary by this Friday. And Fairfax will be meeting tomorrow, Arlington on Wednesday, and then timed nicely, because NVTC is actually meeting this Thursday, so your vice mayor is the chair of NVTC. We've asked that this be added to the agenda for action. So City of Falls Church staff is recommending NVTC be our designated regional partner, and that has the concurrence of the Fairfax County and Arlington staff as well. And you all will be taking the first action to authorize the letter this evening.
Thank you so much. Why don't we hear from Vice Mayor Snyder? And I certainly will be deferring to your recommendation.
Sure. First of all, what this isn't, this isn't a, what should I say, indication of approval that we love the Inside the Beltway I-66 proposal. I think council made some very, very good comments at our last session, and we're going to continue to work for ways to communicate that. But assuming that it moves forward and assuming that there are transit components, and I think one of our major points was there ought to be more rather than less, that it makes sense to use NVTC. We belong. They have the financial infrastructure to handle this. Whatever we do needs to be a cooperative effort between Arlington, Falls Church, and Fairfax County. This is recommended by our partners, so I think it's a good way to go.
Keeps us at the table. And just coincidentally, I got this flyer and the email before I came down this evening, and it's a public hearing on March 12th for more input on the components and content of Inside the Beltway. I wanted to share that.
Yeah, there are some concerns, though, about the chair of the NVTC that, as I understand it, core competency issues that I think we really ought to be, I'm sorry. All right, so is there any, anyone on council would like to comment, Mr. Brueck?
Yeah, it's just... I think it makes a lot of sense to have NVTC look at these issues. However, the way that I'm reading this letter is that some of these items are sort of a done deal. So I couldn't support this letter as it's drafted. For example, there's an indication that our governing bodies, which would include Falls Church, have endorsed the following request. And I understand these are the governor's requests that are sort of plugged into this, but there's no, you know, I just look at the second bullet. NVTC's primary focus in this effort should be to ensure that toll road revenues are managed in a fiscally responsible way, and then it just goes on, which, when I read this letter, indicates to me that, you know, we're endorsing that option. There is not an if tolling goes forward. There's no sort of caveat that it's not a done deal, that we're far from supporting this notion, even though this is where the governor and others may be going. It's just, we haven't had the public engagement. So I just think that there needs to be qualifiers on these various things. So I think the first bullet makes sense to have the NVTC do it, but it's, you know, the proposals, I think, all needs qualifiers throughout this thing until we're in a place to know what the, you know, we've had our public hearings and we've, as a body, come together on whether we agree with what's before us or not, which we haven't done yet.
So let me ask this. Has this letter been blessed already by the staffs of Fairfax County and Arlington?
Yes. However, you know, they haven't met with their governing bodies, so I can go back tomorrow morning with the feedback from council. I think in reality, because, as you see in the governor's letter from December 9th, they're just starting the environmental review phase. They're obviously still having public hearings, as you all heard. The project's still evolving. This is just to get the mechanism in place so that we have a regional body that would be administering the revenues if they're sufficient enough to do the multimodal. So I think I could work with the staff to try to put some clarification that it's, as the project is finalized and implemented, clearly, the governor and the Secretary of Transportation is proceeding with the projects, but the fine-tuning of the projects is not filed.
Well, are they proceeding with the tolling? Because when I asked that question directly last time, I got the answer that they hadn't, that there was opportunity for the public to weigh in. So is the state moving forward with the tolling, or are they moving forward in exploring that option?
They are moving forward with the whole project to improve travel along I-66 Inside the Beltway. Tolling is clearly one of the key components of it. What the final design looks like, what the rate is, is it going to happen at all? You know, once they do the environmental, that I would say is not done, but clearly that is the administration's focus and commitment to trying to improve I-66 Inside the Beltway.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I agree with what Nader's trying to do, and I'd ask staff to figure out some wording or some sort of preamble or something that makes clear that we're not, by doing this, we're not signing off on the project, because there still needs to be public input. And I...
So in front of any place that it says... So in front of any place that it says toll road revenues, if we could just put the word "any"?
Or the other options. I mean, I guess what I'm a little, Cindy, I'm glad that you're raising this now, because I had asked the question of...
Can you move the microphone closer?
I had asked this question of EDOT staff, just because when I read the documents, it sort of indicated that this was sort of fait accompli, and I sort of got the answer, well, not really.
But they did this when they did it. They said, "Not really."
Yeah, I mean, that was like, so now, I'm like, okay, we're going to have a full public discussion about it. And now what I'm hearing, which I think is probably the... public discussion about it. And now, what I'm hearing, which I think is probably the actual correct answer, is, no, it's pretty much a done deal. So I think, you know, some of my pointed questions would have been much more pointed, if you will, when VDOT staff and others were here. So if you can take the message back to them, that, you know, credibility is a big thing. And I asked them this direct question, are we really going to have public engagement, or have the decisions been made? And I got the, have the public, I was led to believe that this was an ongoing discussion and not fait accompli. So I'm very unhappy that I was led to believe that.
I want to be clear-
Because that's how I clearly walked away from the meeting. So-
The intent is clearly to proceed. I would say it's not fait accompli. So I don't want to sound too definitive, but it's clearly the administration's focus, but they have to initiate the environmental assessment. That could totally waylay or change some of the project. Toll revenues are not going to be the sole thing that supports this, so there needs to be CTP funding behind it. And the final package of improvements will have input on the other multimodal besides the toll roads. But I think there's clearly, on the toll road component, a serious focus as one of the solutions that came out of the previous studies for solving the congestion and hopefully some connectivity. But I'll message.
I think probably the opening paragraphs did probably reference that, the way it's communicated, this is the not working. And we can work out wording for it.
And one thing I'll just mention, and not to belabor this point, but I think for public discussion, because this is going to be a huge issue, I had a lot of back-and-forth with the staff, not with city staff, but with the VDOT staff that were here, about, before we could actually engage the public fully on this notion of tolling, we would need to get a better sense of what the options were for utilizing the money before we could ask our citizens to weigh in on the tolling. And we had a robust discussion about that. And if somebody would have said, no, we're just moving forward with environmental, but we're gonna do tolling if the environmental checks out, et cetera, that would have been something I would have liked to have known at that meeting. So if you guys can please carry that message back to staff, that at least one member of council, and perhaps others, are now very confused about where we're at in the public process of all this. And it's either we're moving ahead and just checking boxes, environmental boxes and everything else that needs to be done, or we're sort of looking at all these data points and then figuring out where we're going to go. But we're not necessarily wedded on doing this and having the, I mean, it just changes the landscape of what the public discussion is. And I'm a little unclear about that. If a city resident rightfully were going to ask me, where are we with tolling, et cetera, I wouldn't, at this point, given tonight's discussion that we've had, know what the answer is. And that's not where we should be as public officials.
Yeah. We've also talked about having them come back up for a more public hearing process, and maybe some individual follow-up with the head of VDOT and DRPT. And so, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. So I've had some conversations as well, and I have invited, I guess, the head of, was it DR?
PT.
PT.
Jennifer Mitchell.
And she's agreed to come up and speak with council, or a smaller group if possible, as I think it's important to have some one-on-one time and not get lost in the regional shuffle, because we're not big players in the region by population or a lot of measures. But having the one-on-one conversation, I think, would be very helpful. And so, I've made that invitation, and she's agreed to come up. And that time will be after budget, but hopefully not too long after budget. But I guess in the meantime, I would particularly rely on Vice Mayor Snyder to kind of keep us on the straight and narrow in the meantime, and maybe ask that staff could continue to work with him and take direction from him as to, you know, how we go forward on this, based on Mr. Brug's comments as well. Does that sound like a plan on that?
It sounds great.
Okay. Yes, absolutely.
So, I agree with everything Mr. Brug said, because I left with the same understanding that he did. But the other understanding I had from that conversation was that, in addition to looking at I-66, they were looking at other major arteries, like 50 and 29 and 7, which doesn't appear to show up in here either. Is that included in that language somehow?
I can work to clarify. I think in the VDOT Lexicom, when they say the I-66 Inside the Beltway project, it includes looking at some of those.
It includes more of that. That's what I was wondering.
More than just the lanes down.
Because for us, I think that's really the biggest, one of the big concerns, is if 66 has changed, how is that going to change the rest of our traffic going through?
I mean, I got a call from the lady who, Jennifer, what's her last name? Is it Mitchell? Mitchell. Kind of a heads-up that generated this letter, but I expressed those concerns directly with her, that, you know, when you start tolling or making it more restrictive to get on 66, people are going to start coming on 7, and that's a state road. And we need your cooperation to handle some of the issues that may arise there. And you can't just sort of shift them off of one road, put them on another, and say, that's it. And I think she was sympathetic to that. And that's sort of led to the idea of meeting together to discuss specifics of things like, how do we manage Route 7, and some other things that aren't directly related to tolls on 66, but are secondary output of it. So, that is on the radar, or at least I hope it is. So, anyway.
And I think that's another reason, having MVTC being our collaborative regional partners. Fairfax, Arlington, and us are obviously all members, and we have a regular staff meeting process that can keep the dialogue and the clarification of all our different issues coming to the table, so Falls Church isn't lost on the recommendations that then would come to the MVTC board.
Okay. Mr. Brug, I will-
I just wanted to give a shout-out. Cindy, sort of, me getting hot under the collar is not directed at our city staff. I think you all do a great job. And Cindy, I think it's, I know how difficult it is getting some of these regional letters together, staff working with staff. So I appreciate it. My comments were not, again, directed at you all.
Not directed at Cindy, but at Dave? Was it directed at Dave?
It was all Dave's fault. All transportation problems are Dave's fault. You know, you get stuck in traffic, it's Dave's fault.
I certainly thank you for that clarification.
And I should add, given that there may be some federal involvement, if there's any correspondence with the federal government or federal courts, again, my name is, should not be associated with those documents.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else on this matter? Should we move on to any council comments?
Mayor, if I could, just for clarification, since I need to know whether you'll be able to sign this letter, is council's agreement for consensus that the mayor sign it based on the edits that you all recommend and what I can negotiate, and/or do you wish to take a formal vote on that, or just have consensus?
When would we have to vote?
Tonight. This is why we whipped this up quick, so it was added to your agenda. The letter needs to go back to the secretary this Friday, and my recommendation would be strongly to have our name represented on the letter when it goes back, representing the regional collaboration.
I would say I would ask Cindy and Carol to work together. I think this needs a little, how do I say this, needs a little lawyerly caveating.
Yes.
And it, not that Cindy can't do it, but I think-
I defer to those with the right letters behind your name.
Some caveating on the proposals. But I strongly support, again, the MVTC piece.
Okay. So based on the changes that have been discussed today, is everyone supportive of me being authorized to sign the letter that comes out the next couple of days?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all screwed up with SpongeBob.
Don't blame me. I make a motion right now to blame Dave. Or actually censor, we've never censored anybody that I'm aware of, but I think it'll be a great first thing. So, let's just get that in abeyance. Keep that in mind.
Why do you agree to tolling on I-66?
Dave did. Dave told me it's okay. Anyway, I'm just kidding.
Well, thank you, council. I will work with Carol and my peers at the other two localities, so that we have consensus on the language.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and move on. I think we got that settled. The last item would be council comments. And before we go on, just one last point on council comments. Mr. Shields, I think is going to be preparing his budget.
What?
Yeah. I've heard of, so, a presentation coming up, I think, next week. And so, if anybody has any specific issues or data they'd like to see, or I'd like to see a slide of this or that, I think just get together with him, pass on your comments to him. He may or may not include them. But I have heard over time that, I want to see this, or I want to see that, and the thing. So, now would be the time to let him know that, so that he has time to prepare before he puts his final package together for us. So-
If you'd like to send an email or a phone call, that'd be great as well.
On that note, I think we had had some discussion about possibly having a Budget and Finance Committee meeting, sort of dry-run, anticipate questions that council may have during the presentation. I don't know if there's still time to do that, or if there's still an interest in doing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Brug is right. We did discuss that in our last Budget and Finance meeting. And I have not been able to find a single morning or evening this week that I personally don't already have a commitment. It's possible. I don't know what our notice requirements are. Tonight's Monday. When's the earliest we would be able to meet? Thursday? Yeah. Ms. McCroskey's, and Thursday is out, because that's Career Day at MEH. Friday is out, because it's Parent Teacher Conference Day. And so, we're just out of days. So I would second what the mayor says, which is, if anybody has any suggestions, and I'm sure there are some good ideas floating around out there, please share them with the manager.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Conlon?
Just reminding all of you that there's this great party on Thursday night at the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School Cafeteria. I'm celebrating two groundbreaking things that Falls Church City did well. The daycare program, which is 40 years old, and the Ivy Program, which is 30-ish years old. And everyone is invited to that. It's at 7:30. It's in the cafeteria.
At MEH?
At MEH. And it, you should be out of there before 9:00, if everyone follows my schedule.
Okay, sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Zee?
We've now had the stormwater utility run for a year. We've at least collected taxes twice. We're about to collect it again. So, I'd like to assert tradition of having an annual report to council on what you've done, what you've managed to do, what plan to do, what's still lacking.
Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Okay, sure.
And Mr. Zee's question about annual report reminded me. Is there any annual report or anything that goes to the Mary Riley Stiles family? Do we have any, anything that we send them? Well, shouldn't we, like, now, just start sending them a Christmas card or something? Just, we don't have any communication with them? Is that a, we just don't? Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Should we go ahead and adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
All in favor? Opposed? Tensions? Yeah, I say that we're adjourned. Thank you.